Okay, we have eight, so that's good. I was just concerned about a budget amendment. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and then Sid is on the phone.
Yep.
Oh, and Zach is on his way.
Oh, he is, okay.
Zach is on his way. He's coming. He'll be here soon. I was gonna say.
We do have pre-coming boards already, so.
Oh, wow, okay. Let me see them. Everyone would take their seats. We're going to get started momentarily.
Good evening. It is 6 o'clock PM on Tuesday, July the 26th, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. Madam Clerk, the mics are open. Please call the roll.
Mayor Ali.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Member Seer. Councilmember Grayb. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler. Councilmember Regenbach. Councilmember Rockregel.
Present.
And Councilmember Valpula.
Present.
We have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone in our city council chambers, as well as Brady Johnson and our listening audience at WCBU. I'd also like to welcome the audience watching via cable, Channel 22. Please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
We are at the approval of the minutes.
Councilman Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I move to approve the minutes of the special city council meeting held on July 9th and the joint city council and town board meeting held on July 12th, 2022, and the special city council meeting held on July 19th, 2022, as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. There's no discussion. Please cash your ballots.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the consent agenda. 22-258 is a communication from the mayor and corporation council with a request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency. 22-259 is a communication with a request to approve a purchase of four solar-powered camera surveillance trailers from Industrial Video and Control in the amount of $91,239. 22-260 is a communication with a request to approve an agreement with Pace Schedular to upgrade the City of Peoria Police Department's scheduling and timekeeping software in the amount of $16,075. 22-261 is a communication with a request to approve an agreement with Central Square Technologies for Public Safety GIS Analytics Services and Public Safety Project Management Services to upgrade the existing CrimeView Analytics Software in the amount of $17,550. 22-262 is a communication with a request to concur with a recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending an existing special use ordinance number 14108 in a Class R4 Single Family District for an early childhood center to install fencing with waivers for the property located at 923 West Millman Street and 1004 to 1006 West Butler Street. 22-263 is a communication with a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R3 Single Family Residential District for a short-term rental for the property located at 1913 East Knox Avenue. 22-264 is a communication with a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R3 Single Family Residential District for a short-term rental for the property located at 601 East Wilson Avenue. 22-265 is a communication from the city manager with a request to approve the site application for a Class B Restaurant 50% Food Liquor License with On-Site Consumption and Retail Sale of Alcohol for the Queen of Squash LLC, 1108 West Glen, contingent upon the issuance of all appropriate permits and a certificate of occupancy, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve. 22-266 is a communication with a request to approve the Labor Day Picnic at Riverfront Festival Park on September 5th, 2022, sponsored by Peoria Area Community Events, Inc., subject to their filing the necessary permits and approval as required by the city code. 22-267 is a communication with a request to deny the site application for a Class C1 Packaged Goods Liquor License with the retail sale of alcohol on the premises for Mohammed Issa, doing business as Sterling Liquor Store, 3037 North Sterling Avenue, Suite A and B, with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to deny. 22-268 is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the Housing Commission with a request to concur of Debbie LaRue. 22-269 are appointments by Mayor Ali to the CDBG Public Service Advisory Commission with a request to concur of Janelle McLeod and Erin Kilgore. And 22-270 is a communication with a request to receive and file a report from the Illinois Department of Transportation titled Documentation Review Number 75, and that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any items to remove from consent? Councilmember Jackson?
Item number 22262.
Are there any other items to remove from consent? Can I get a motion to approve moved by Councilmember Kelly, seconded by Councilmember Regenbach? Any discussion? Please cash your ballots. Councilmember Rockregel?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
22-262 is a communication with a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending an existing special use ordinance number 14108 in a Class R4 Single Family District for an early childhood center to install fencing with waivers for the property located at 923 West Millman Street and 1004 through 1006 West Butler Street.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to, first of all, say that I am in full support of this project, and I would like to commend Director Braggs and the staff over at the Webster Daycare Center for their plans to upgrade the property over there. And the new fencing is just part of the plan. For those who were not aware of it, I just had a, just wanted to let folks know that the fence has been up for probably the duration of my lifetime. And so it is in much need of replacement, and I just want to commend the staff at the daycare for some of the plans they have to do some renovations and upgrade the property there. So I am in full support. And with that, Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we approve item number 22262.
Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any discussion? Please cash your ballots. Councilmember Rockregel?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at regular business. 22-271 is a communication from the city manager and the chief diversity and inclusion officer with a request to approve the Peoria Equity Accountability Program, establish the first City of Peoria MWBE certification, and build a certified business, certified business directory for minority business enterprises and/or women business enterprises.
And we have Assistant City Manager Kimberly Richardson. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I have here Director Green to give a present, a quick presentation and answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Mayor Ali and council. Can you all hear me? We adjusted the microphone before I came up here because it's a little discriminatory. Just joking, based on my height. But anyway, I am here to speak about the Peoria Equity and Accountability Program, so thank you all for having me and taking the time to listen. About a week ago, I circulated a memorandum to council, and that memorandum detailed the Peoria Equity Accountability Program. We're calling it PAP, and some of the details that come along with that program. So I will just hit a few of the high points, and then, following my, my bullet points, if you guys have any questions that you'd like to propose to me, I'm happy to try to answer them. I will also point out that we have our consultant from Human Capital Development, Mr. Gabe Jaja is here with us in the audience today, so if there are questions on the more technical side, I may defer to him to answer your questions. So as I stated, about a week ago, I sent the council a memorandum detailing the PAP program and asking council to approve of the establishment of a minority business and women-owned business certification program that would be issued by the City of Peoria, and it would also come with a business listing. The two-year certification program would serve to provide a mechanism for officially recognizing businesses as MWBEs, or minority and women-owned business enterprises, so that they can carry that designation with them as they do business here with us and elsewhere. Businesses currently self-certify or certify through other jurisdictions, as we currently have no City of Peoria business certification. The certification will come to, come as no cost to the business owners who apply. PAP would also establish a minority and/or women-owned business listing that will be housed and maintained using the ePrism software. The MWBE listing will be publicly accessible, and it will provide a virtual, real-time, comprehensive list of our PAP certificate holders and information about the goods and services that they provide. We currently house more of a static directory of MWBEs that have self-certified or, again, certified with other jurisdictions, and that directory is not interactive. People make it easier, I'm sorry, PAP will make it easier for city departments, contractors, and vendors with whom we do business, and members of the general public to access our list and hire minorities and women, thus increasing our utilization. We've already been working diligently to increase utilization within the construction, contracting, and workforce arena by establishing subcontracting goals and mechanisms for monitoring contractor compliance. However, as my memo to council suggested, our goals have gone unmet for the vast majority of the time represented. As set forth in the memo, that time period was between 2015 and 2019, and the goals for minority subcontractors were particularly low during that same timeframe. PAP will not only encourage utilization in construction and trades, but it will encourage utilization of minority and women-owned businesses in any and every field or practice where one exists. With the creation of PAP, we are demonstrating our intentionality and dedication to minority and women business owners who've gone underutilized for a variety of reasons. At this juncture, the hope is that vendors with whom we do business and others in the community follow the lead of the City of Peoria and do their part to help increase the utilization and ultimately the amount of dollars spent with minority and women-owned businesses. As far as the rollout of PAP goes, we have a few events set up in the event that this measure passes tonight. On July 28th, Thursday, at the downtown branch of the Peoria Public Library, there is a planned training for community partners and volunteers that have been so gracious to assist me and Mr. Jaja in a training where they will gain the skills to help enroll these business owners for a future community launch event. Speaking of the community launch event, on August 10th, we will be hosting a community launch event again at the downtown branch of the Peoria Public Library, and at that event, we will provide assistance to these women and minority business owners who want to apply for certification through the City of Peoria's PAP program. Lastly, I'd just like to say thank you so much to my fellow department heads and staff. Many of you know I'm a department of one, and so it has been quite a feat to, to put this program together and bring it to council. I've been telling them all how nervous I am all day, but they have actually come together and actually acknowledged that equity is not something that stays within one division and that I cannot do this just within the equal opportunity department. So I have to give kudos to Public Works and to the Code Department and to the Finance Department and to the Legal Department and to everybody else that I bothered, even down to the signs that Cy brought me this, this afternoon. I just want to say thank you, and hopefully going forward, we can all move to advance equity together, acknowledging that it's just a start, but as long as we start somewhere and just keep working, eventually we'll get progress going, so. Thank you. Thank you for your efforts, Ms. Green, and for everybody who's supportive of those efforts. Can, can you also talk about where a similar program has been implemented? Absolutely. Okay. I started in December, and almost immediately, we started meeting about this initiative. It did not have a name at the time, but we did look at Champagne's CDAP program. That's the Champagne Diversity Advancement Program. And although it's much more extensive than PAP is at this juncture, it is really a fabulous program that has proved successful for their community. It also established a minority and women business database, a listing that houses all of the businesses that are certified through Champagne. Their Equity and Engagement Division does a host of activities related to their CDAP program, in addition to many other activities that focus on equity and advancement within minority and women community and other, other communities as well. Thank you. Questions, council? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I thank you, Ms. Green, for this presentation. I'm very excited about this and gladly will be supporting it this evening. When you talk about advancing diversity, equity, and inclusion within our city, we must be intentional about that. And the way you can really make progress is making sure that minority businesses and women-owned businesses are able to participate in the commerce of the city. And so this is a great program that will allow them to do that. It's a formalized program that we have not seen before, and I'm very excited to support that. So thank you so much for your effort on this, and thank you to the other department heads for showing the synergy within the City of Peoria. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank you also, Director Green, for the work on this and all the department heads that participated. You know, we talk about this kind of thing in, in general terms many times, but to have something that actually puts it on, on paper or online or makes it accessible to people, I mean, I think this is going to have a great, great value. And I, I know even in things like the East Village Grow Cell, people ask me who the minority contractors are that they could reach out to, so having a, a source of that information is going to be beneficial for the business owners as well as many in the community. So thank you very much for all the efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. Any other questions? Can I get a motion? Moved by Councilmember Jackson, seconded by Councilmember Grayb? Okay, seconded by Councilmember Grayb. Any other discussion? Please cash your ballots. Councilmember Rockregel?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
22-272 is a communication from the chief of police with a request to approve an intergovernmental agreement between Peoria Public Schools District 150 and the City of Peoria to employ and compensate the district's off-duty campus safety employees during special events in the city at their current overtime wage rate.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, everybody. I'm accompanied by my counterpart at the school district, Chief Boone. With the, with the uptick in youth violence crime and its effect on the City of Peoria, it has led us to reimagine how we can proactively work together to create direct cause solutions. Both leaderships of the Peoria Police Department and the Peoria Public Schools' safety met to discuss a joint effort to curb youth violence and interrupt it before it happens. By focusing on a citywide proactive approach specific to areas where youth frequent outside of the school day, the partnership will allow Peoria Public School officers to partner with the Peoria Police on patrols Friday and Saturday nights, as well as on special occasions and events throughout the year. The Peoria Public Schools team will report to the police department in the evening hours to be briefed alongside us and assist and complement our officers in designated areas to prevent youth violence incidents. And as we, as we spoke about this, and I'll let Chief Boone here speak in a bit, one of the things that we thought about is, at the police department, is how do we, you know, a force multiplier, if you will, but eyes and ears with the knowledge and experience that they have? So he has a wide variety of experience and time with his officers at the, at the school who know the youth of our community, who have relationships. And one of the things I would say is, everybody loves the school resource officers. Those are established relationships that they have for many years. They know them as kids, they know them as adults, they're invited to weddings, quinceañeras, birthdays, you name it. They're part of all of that in the lives of the youth that they've impacted. And so how do we use that knowledge and that skill and those relationships to really curtail some of the things that we see in our downtown areas during curfew hours? So they'll be used as curfew details as well to go out, see where these youth are at, talk to them, get them home. And when they see them, they know the parents already, they have the, the contacts. And more specifically is, they get to see some of the things that are happening on the weekend. We have great contact now and great communication between both agencies, but this gives them an opportunity to be out there and see it firsthand, and then go back to the school district and provide some of those wraparound services that they can provide through the school district itself at the beginning of the week. So I'm going to pass it on to Chief Boone to just speak on this a little further.
Thank you, chief. Just, he basically nailed it in a nutshell. The big push of this was to enhance school safety, and enhancing school safety, school safety is not just an eight, eight-hour job. We need to make sure we're at places where kids are at play, and we need to make sure we have the availability, availability to do wraparound services for families. You know, when you have big incidents where kids fight or argue, an arrest is not an answer. It's a tool that sometimes is used, but it's not an answer. So when kids are fighting, having an argument at a place, you have officers that are able to respond to that call and not just, you know, have kids run away, but be able to take a kid home, find out what's going on in that home, put wraparound services in place, and follow up on that, and be able to track how well their services are working to help families. If you stop a fight from happening on Saturday night, it's going to probably bleed into a high school or middle school on Monday morning that turns into a shooting on Tuesday. This is the root cause work, and it's, it's really the future of what policing is. When I looked this up years ago, other, other cities are using this, this tool, Baltimore, Orlando, other, Atlanta Public Schools Police, they're using this same tool to be able to get to root cause work to not only help school safety, but help climate. And, and some of the dividends it pays with the officers, even now, with the, with our officers in schools, we had a young man who was exhibiting some tough behaviors. He was always kicked out of class, things like that. We were able to isolate this young man, find out that he had a, a brother that was killed in front of him. Mom had a child, they had a miscarriage, and the officers banded together after we found out that they didn't even have a headstone to mourn this child. So the officers were able to pay for a headstone for that. There was another young lady that was killed, and the officers banded together and was able to pay for a headstone for that parent. And that parent was very appreciative when she came to the graduation, that would have been her daughter's graduation, and got the diploma and was able to see the headstone. So these are the kind of root cause things that I want to do outside of the normal school day to not only help school safety, but Peoria climate.
And I'll just add to that is, this isn't, because I know this question is going to come up, we still need more police officers. This isn't a supplement to not hire more police officers. We still need to hire police officers. They're not going to be an enforcement tool. There'll be eyes and ears, they'll be able to be out there communicating with the youth and these young adults that they see. And again, the point is, we don't want to have to arrest if we don't have to. If there's somebody there that can just stop it before it happens, call mom, call dad, give them a ride home, give them a ride somewhere, there's these relationships already set up. So this isn't to stop enforcement or, or to get rid of police officers. We still need police officers to do what police need to do, but there's a spot here where we can interrupt the violence that we see with our youth in a way where it's more restorative and that they can continue to have those wraparound services with them. So, any questions?
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Director Boone, and, you know, the collaboration is really appreciated. This is unique. I was going to ask the question on where else it had been done, but you answered that question. Miami, Orlando, Atlanta, other areas?
Hopefully now Peoria.
Yes, okay. Peoria.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, gentlemen, for this presentation. Just a couple clarifying questions. With the interdepartmental, intergovernmental agreement between both the Peoria Public Schools' District 150 and then the City of Peoria Police Department, are you all covering the costs of paying the resource officers to participate in this and then also the overtime costs? Is that a shared cost between the two entities?
No, we, we would be paying their overtime rate.
Okay, coming out of the Peoria Police Department's budget, your current budget. So you have that within your current budget? You won't need any additional funds or anything like that?
Not asking for any additional funds. We have that. Yes, sir.
Sounds good. And, and my thought process of it is, if you're able to bring the resource officers in to address those issues, it actually frees up your officers from being consumed by non, you know, threatening issues, and so that way, that actually saves money in the long run.
Absolutely, and, and that's one of the reasons we also thought about this, is when we talk about the downtown activities that we see on our Fridays and Saturday nights, well, we have officers that are down there, but oftentimes, there's other issues that require our presence somewhere else in the city, and those officers are pulled off to go there, while we have the school resource officers who could potentially just be walking up and down the street there, talking with the, with our community members, continue with those relationships. They'll have body cameras that will supply for them, so they'll be great eyes and ears and witnesses to anything that occurs as well.
This is great. As Peoria is becoming more social, again, now that we are transitioning through the pandemic, we will need to invest in things such as this. I mean, other communities do this. Some people call it clean and safe, these concepts where you, you bring in external security presence to come in and just make sure that activities that we are having for our quality of life that are tax-generating opportunities for our city go off without minimal issues. So I definitely will be in support of this this evening. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to second what Councilman Allen had to say. I think this sounds like a very innovative and hopefully very effective policy. It seems to make sense to me. That is not necessarily an endorsement, but I do have a question, however, regarding the finances of this. The council communication reads, the department, the Police Department, will agree to compensate the district's off-duty campus safety employees. And then later, it says, "The district will be reimbursed through funds in a certain account." Is the Police Department directly paying each of these officers, or are they going to be paid through the school district?
Yes, the school district will pay them, they will invoice us, and we will pay the school district.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Good question. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I would just like to echo the sentiments of Councilmember Allen and Councilmember Kelly. And I must say, as an employee of Peoria Public Schools, I have wrapped my head several times trying to figure out how we can get students connected with services, and this is a very creative, innovative approach. I hope that, I'm assuming you'll be making use of the newly hired, are they justice advocates that the school district has? They certainly are looking to see how they can connect the students with services. So, I just want to commend you on collaborating together, and if there's anything else that we as schools can do to support you and your efforts, please let me know. Thank you.
Councilmember Reganbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and congratulations to the two of you for this little bit out-of-the-box thinking, at least for this part of the state. I think this has got a lot of potential, and I think it's been well-stated by my colleagues. One question, though, I would have is, is this going to be every Friday and Saturday that you'll be engaging these officers, chief?
Yes, yes, that's the plan, and on special occasions. We wanted to have this done before the Fourth of July, to have them out there with us during the Fourth of July as well. We weren't able to get it accomplished on time, so next year during some of these big holidays where the SROs aren't in school, we'd love to have them be part of our team and some of the things, some of the other things that we'll be doing out in the community as well.
And that'll be ongoing throughout the school year, throughout the summer? It'll be an ongoing endeavor?
Yes, sir.
And does this fund that we'll be using, does that have a maximum on it, you know, when you get to a certain level? Are you going to?
Yeah, at some point, we may have to sit back and reevaluate, but right now, we're still down our officers, we're still at 200, we need to be at 222. We're not there yet, so we do have, we're allotted the 222, we have the funds for that. Until we can get to that, and we don't see that happening real soon, we're going to continue to look at partnerships and how we can leverage what we have here in our own city.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Grab, did you want?
Council Reganbach asked.
Okay, okay, great. All right, thank you, gentlemen. And can I get a motion? Moved by Councilmember Jackson, seconded by Councilmember Grab. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Recregal? Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-two dash two seven three is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to adopt ordinance A or the recommendation from staff to adopt ordinance B, both amending an existing use with approvals as a special use with waivers in a Class R six multifamily residential district and a Class R eight multifamily residential district for an existing neighborhood center to allow parking lot improvements, a new accessory storage structure, and to add property to the boundary of the special use for the property located at eight hundred and eight sixteen Northeast Madison Avenue, eight oh three and eight oh nine Northeast Jefferson Avenue, with the property to be added located at seven twenty-four and eight fourteen Northeast Madison Avenue, eight oh one and eight fifteen Northeast Jefferson Avenue, and four oh six Wayne Street.
Thank you. Councilmember Reganbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Friendship House is quite a landmark in the North Valley, and the work they do is something that is appreciated by many. It's appreciated by so many, in fact, that previously it had been in District One, represented by Councilwoman Jackson, and now is in District Three. So, as you can tell from the description that the clerk just read, there's a lot of moving parts to this, and based on some internal concerns and the split recommendation from the Planning, Zoning Commission and staff, I've talked to CEO Marcel Somerville, welcome, by the way, Mr. Somerville, glad to see you here. And we're going to ask for a two-week deferral on this. I will be meeting with him and his team on Friday to walk through a little more of the details on it, but this is no reflection on the project itself, just getting some clarity that we can share with all the colleagues. So, with that, Madam Mayor, I would move to defer this to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Velkula. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Recregal? Motion to defer two weeks is approved unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business. Twenty-two dash one seven five is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R four single-family residential district for a short-term rental for the property located at one seven zero nine West Sherman Avenue.
Assistant Manager?
Thank you. We have Director Doolin here to give further information to the council.
Okay, Director Doolin?
Thank you, Mayor. So, this item, if you remember correctly, had come before council about a month and a half or so ago. While it was coming before council, we discovered that it was actually operating as a duplex, not a single-family residence, but the application to the Planning and Zoning Commission was specifically for single-family dwelling. So, council had deferred the action with the item hopefully going back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We did reach out to the applicant and did not hear back from them, so we tried to get it on the council agenda, but they didn't pick up the signage and the notice requirements to put them on the Planning and Zoning Commission, so it never went to, was never allowed to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission based on our notice requirements. As this item would be asking for an approval for a single family when the house is a dwelling, staff would ask you that you deny this request, and then if the applicant would like to come forward and actually apply for the duplex in the future, they would go through the process as well.
Okay. Any questions about the change from request to adopt to request to deny? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I move to deny.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Any other discussion? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If this is denied tonight, what is the timeframe for the applicant to be able to essentially get their bearings in a row, to be able to come back to planning and zoning, I'm assuming, and then come back to the council for reconsideration?
As this property has been operating now without a license and a special use for considerable time, if this is denied tonight, we will inform the applicant that they shouldn't be renting an house Airbnb until they go through the process. At this point, with notice requirements, they could get on the September Planning and Zoning Commission and then come back to council for approval, possibly the second meeting in September.
Thank Director Doolin, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. Okay, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Recregal? Motion passes unanimously. That's to deny, thank you.
Twenty-two dash two four nine is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Public Works with a request for the following. A, to approve the addition of ten full-time maintenance workers that will increase the city's full-time maintenance worker staff from thirty-one employees to forty-one employees; will reduce the city's temporary maintenance worker staff from fifteen employees to five employees during the summer; and will reduce the city's temporary maintenance worker staff from twenty-two employees to twelve employees during the winter; and B, adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three revised annual budget relating to the use of general fund balance and storm water utility fund balance for the additional staff in the Public Works Department in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-two and four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three. We will need two separate motions, and there is also a handout on your desk with a revised ordinance.
Assistant City Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We do have Director Powers here to give further explanation and answer any additional questions.
Director, thank you.
Mayor, councilors, the Yellow Sheet is really to the point of the greater, I guess, good of all of us, as we had a very pleasant surprise, even more pleasant than what we had initially found, which we are going to find a savings of far more than we had anticipated by going this route. What we're really looking at here is added productivity during the winter months, if I boil this down, whereas we had part-time staff for two days a week versus five unless we had a storm. Those part-time employees to full-time to cover their other three days and see the productivity that you see outlined in the background of the original council communication we submitted at the last meeting. So, all of those things are still true in the background that you read before. It will add that added productivity. The greater surprise is, when we are looking today at the compensation packages for the part-time staff, it equated to near seventy dollars an hour when you added all of that up, whereas in the summer months, we were actually paying more for part-time employees than we were full-time. However, excuse me, it's the other way around. No, that is right. And in the winter, of course, more, because they only worked, we paid our full-time more because they only worked two days a week. When you average that collectively throughout the year, the net difference is, by converting these ten FTEs to full-time for a full calendar year, it will be a fifty-dollar, or fifty-thousand-dollar net increase to our budget, which is, that's a pretty cheap investment in my book, and I hope you see it the same way. The reason you see the difference for the remainder of this year is, again, because we are going into those winter months, whereas we would have laid them off, so we would have had a month's savings in salaries, and then when we brought them back, they would have only been working two days a week unless we had a storm. That's why you see the remainder of this year at two hundred and fifty thousand versus the lower number you see for next year of only fifty thousand for a complete year. Now, I can go as deep as you want to go into that, but that is the bottom line, and we were actually very pleasantly surprised when we found today that there was even more savings than we had initially thought we were going to find. So, that's the Yellow Sheet that you have.
Questions for the director? We like the savings. We like the savings.
We do too, Mayor, thank you. And the added productivity. When you look at that last sentence, the crack ceiling that they are doing now will save immensely on what we see in potholes next spring, again, barring a terrible winter, as I've said before, and you've heard me right, or even seen me right, excuse me, winter will win if it wants to. We hope it doesn't. But doing the crack ceiling keeps water on the top of the road instead of under it, and if it get a hard freeze, it heaves, and then we have eighteen thousand potholes. That's what this is about, that and more. So, thank you for your consideration.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Director Powers, for this. I agree with Mayor Ali. The savings is great, but also I'm very excited about just the additional productivity that we will have. I think our constituents are very excited about being able to drive on smooth roads now like Allen Road without the risk of needing a new wheel alignment, if you will, but knowing all seriousness, though, we're excited about this, and also, I'm excited about additional snow routes that will come from this this winter time. Hopefully, we have a mild winter, but we know that old man winter can be very savage sometimes here in Illinois, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments? How about a motion? Moved by Councilmember Grab, seconded by Councilmember Jackson, that's on item A. Please cast your ballots on item A. Councilmember Recregal? Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Grab?
We're going to need eight on this one. Move to approve the ordinance amending the budget for twenty-two and twenty-three as outlined.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Recregal? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, councilors.
Madam Clerk?
Is there any additional unfinished business? Then we would be on to new business.
Any new business? No new business.
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council, and we have three citizens who have submitted cards.
There was five. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. First, we have Asa Lewis Jr., Mr. Lewis.
All right, can you guys hear me? Everybody good?
Yes.
Okay, hello, and thank you for your time, and I apologize in advance for taking a step backwards and covering topics that have been covered in the news recently, and I apologize if I get redundant, as my comments have already been covered, because I'm nice, you know, I'm really new to this, so trying to take my steps forward to get informed, so. My name is Asa Lewis Jr. I am thirty-six years old, and I spent all but six months of my life in Peoria. I love the city, flaws and all. I have been closely affected by those city's flaws. I lost my brother Marques to gun violence in two thousand seventeen, and even though his murder didn't happen in Peoria, the entire situation was born from ongoing situations that had been happening in Peoria. When I lost him, I spent a lot of time being affected by it many different ways and trying to figure out which direction to go next. While I was trying to figure out how to deal with that situation, Peoria started seeing a surge of an increase, increase in violence. I would see over and over again all the negative comments about Peoria and especially our youth. I spent several years talking about how I wanted to do more for Peoria without doing anything about it. It took me until two thousand twenty to finally find my path towards helping, and in two thousand twenty, I had the idea to start a program in honor of my brother, and that program officially became a nonprofit in two thousand twenty-one called Make Your Mark. Make Your Mark is a nonprofit that has two main goals, to reward positive and changed behaviors and to equip our youth with the skills to handle high-stress, high-emotion situations, which I think is the most important part. You see what we're losing with our kids, our youth are handling these minor situations, turning them into big things because they don't know how to handle it, so we take pride in that. Working in several different middle schools, working with Ms. Jackson down at Roosevelt, or excuse me, Elise Ford Allen Academy, and coaching several different sports, I've seen how much our kids need us and our programs. I felt embarrassed that it had taken me this long to finally do something. Once I got started, I was so surprised to see the support I got from my friends in our community, people like Mr. Banks back here with me that I've worked with a couple times. I spent so much time trying to figure out what that first step would be and didn't realize that any step is a great first step, and that's why I'm here tonight, just to ask the city to take that first step. That's all I'm asking you guys to do. Take that first step as far as this violence funding goes. Any action is better than inaction. This doesn't feel like a partnership with our city, you know, ask any of us with our boots on the ground, and there's never been more collaboration among groups like mine, and I don't want to name other people because I want them to put their names on my comment, but I've teamed up with multiple nonprofits, multiple groups here in the city, and there's never been more collaboration with our young people in the city trying to make things happen. But somehow, it doesn't feel like we are a team with our city leaders. First of all, the public comments at the end of the at the end of City Council meetings doesn't make it seem like you really encourage us to speak our minds. For people like myself, who have multiple jobs, uh, for those who have families, I mean, this young lady right here has been so well-behaved. Shout out to her. But she shouldn't have to be here for this. But she doesn't know how long it's gonna take for us to get our chance to make our comments. People who have, who coach, wanting to come and speak our piece is increasingly difficult. It could be an hour away, it could be two hours. In my humble opinion, the public comment section should start, uh, these proceedings. They ask us to sign an intent waiver what we're gonna talk about, so we usually don't talk about that day's proceedings anyways. Secondly, there's a group I learned about last week. I don't remember the exact name of the group, but it was made up of council members, elected officials, and residents. And I don't remember hearing how that group was decided upon. Um, were there interviews, applications, referrals? Because I know for a fact that people like myself and others would love to be part of stuff like that. But if we don't hear about it, again, it doesn't feel like we're a team. People like myself really care about the city, and we're not getting access to the things that we need to be able to really make a difference. With my nonprofit, we have volunteered, fundraised, sold shirts among other things just to scrape enough money to make sure our program has what is needed to make sure our kids are excited about our message enough to really want to be a part of it. So it's really frustrating when I come to my first City Council meeting and hear discussions that don't go anywhere on how to spend over two million dollars in curb-to-violence funding while my program and others are on the ground trying to make a difference with little to no support. I'm not asking for a handout. I'm asking to feel represented, to feel like a part of this team. To... Sorry. To feel like a part of the team. It seems like until you guys find the answer, there will be very little action. Without putting their names in my comment, again, I won't, I can say with certainty there's never been more collaboration. There are smaller answers than you guys are looking for, that one big answer, right? Let us help. That's all I'm asking you to do. People like myself who, who love the three-oh-nine, love Peoria and plan on making a difference are begging for access, begging for information, begging for ways to help. All we're asking you to do is be a part of a team. Let me be on that team, let others be on that team. That's all I'm asking you. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Lewis? Next is Mr. Lawrence Marshad. Marshard, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
It's Lawrence Marshard. I live in the East Bluff. And I'm here to talk about Alexis Camery Scott. That's Peoria's most high-profile missing persons case that's going to hit five years. Five years in September. Five years. The Illinois governor has cleared the backlog of state police DNA case kits. What about Alexis Camery Scott's case? Two, why has there been no pressers or public comments on Alexis Camery Scott's case from the PPD, Peoria Public, Peoria Public, Peoria Police Department in more than two years? Okay, Scott's case arguably is the most high-profile case in Peoria, yet we hear nothing from the police department. Number three, how many full-time detectives, investigators are employed by the police department? First, I would seriously reduce their numbers to cut the budget and trim the ineffective fat. If this group of well-paid detectives, investigators cannot make serious progress in five years on this case, why are they still employed? I'm writing this, and this is not from anyone else. This is my words. Whoever is in charge of the detectives and investigators should be fired. The perpetrators of this case who did this to Alexis Camery Scott, I'm pretty sure are not criminal masterminds. Four, if the PPD and City Hall were in fact serious about this case, they would have boosted the reward dollars to five thousand or ten thousand a long time ago. It's twenty-five-hundred dollars. It's been that way forever. Twenty-five-hundred dollars is not a serious amount, and everyone knows it. The PPD, number five, the PPD and city have no problem calling in other departments and agencies on their vaunted direct patrols since the current chief of police took office. So why is the PPD not aggressively teaming up with the state police, the FBI, and anyone else they need to crack this case? If they have, it's far past time they actually communicate that partnership outreach with the public. They don't do that. Finally, Peoria police proved long ago that this case is probably beyond their means and capacity to resolve. Where is the professionalism and the humility to admit your shortcomings and call in better-resourced third parties to solve the Alexis Camery Scott case? We don't see that. We are disappointed. I am a representative of the Alexis Camery Scott grassroots campaign. We want answers. We demand answers from the City Hall, from the police. People have not been doing their jobs. It's been five years. Five years. And one another, and what I want to say is, we are not afraid of the people who did this to Alexis Camery Scott. We are not afraid of the police. We are not afraid of the, what passes for the establishment in this city. Everything I've outlined shows that they don't take this case seriously. We are so disappointed with this. We demand accountability from City Hall, from each one of you people here and the police department, from the chief, from all of his investigators and department heads. It's far past time something serious should be done. Start with communicating to the community, to the public. Alexis Camery Scott is my neighbor in the, in the third district. She's been forgotten. Her mother's been forgotten. Her family, her children have been forgotten. And I, we refuse to let that happen. We refuse to let that happen. It's been five years. Just remember that. And s- ask yourself if anything serious has been done. Five years. Start with that DNA kit. Where's the results? They, they, you know, processed these kits. Let's have some results here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have William Jones, Mr. Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, councilpeople. I haven't been up here for about two years, close to it because of COVID and things going on. I'm here for two things. One, definitely for the Alexis Scott campaign. Chief, I've never had the opportunity to actually speak to you, but I'd seen you last week at a shooting. Seemed like a pretty nice guy, and I think you're doing a good job. But they need to move on this case. They've had it, like you said, five years. Every one of these councilpeople here, Mr. Euler, Mr. Grab, Mr. Riggenbacher, please get off your phone and give us a little respect and show some respect while we're talking. I watched him when he was up here. That's so disrespectful. You know, we're talking about a missing woman here, and her mother's sitting home with the kid, seven years old, looking for his mother. We don't know where she's at. Got to get an indication. And I've given information on this case, and I've been on up from day one, and I'm her, probably her top searcher, and I've done this all over the country. And let me tell you something. This case is the worst case that I've ever seen. They've got enough evidence, Chief. Nothing against you. I know you just come in into the hornet's nest here in Peoria and took over. Maybe you don't know about it. But they've got enough evidence on certain people on this case that they should have closed it two months after it happened. Because I've given them information from people that are actually involved. And I, I'm not even a detective. If I can do, I mean, are these guys geniuses, criminals? I mean, are they better than the guys that escaped from Alcatraz? I mean, come on, I mean, how smart do you have to be? If you want to commit a crime, do you come to Peoria and do it? That's what it sounds like. Five years for DNA, just, I mean, come on. They've got enough evidence on these people that were involved than they did on, on Jeffrey Dahmer. I mean, come on, how much do you need? I mean, I've sat here many a times and talked about this. I don't know. And Ms. Jackson, you wasn't here. There's, most of them was. Mr. Allen wasn't. Mayor, you are, you were councilwoman at the time, so you remember when I had come up here many a times. I'm pleading with you. If that's what it takes, I'll beg you. If that's what it takes. April Allen needs answers, man. She needs them. She hasn't gotten one. She hasn't gotten one. No one calls her. I talked to April just the other day, went and seen her. She's just as upset today as she was five years ago. And who wouldn't be when her kid's missing? You put yourself in her shoes when your kid's missing. If it ever does, hopefully it doesn't. But think about that. She's got a young kid she's taking care of, and it's asking where his mom's at. And she has no answers for that. What you gonna say? You know, she's taking the place of a mother and a grandmother all in one. Put yourself in her shoes. Just think about that. Put yourself in her shoes one, just for one day, and just see how it feels. But some of yous, when you're talking, you're sitting there dithering with your phones and your computers, and you're walking out. That's so disrespectful when somebody's losing a loved one. And I've seen it here many a times by a few of yous. And I would just ask that you give the, the people that are talking about it, just give them five minutes. That's all we're asking for. And give them your, you know, your attention. And also, I wanted tonight to come here and talk about Springdale Cemetery. I was over there several times today, and I talked to some of the workers and some of the people there. They got a great staff over there, as you know. And it's changed. Mr. Grab, you know, I've been on this. I'm passionate about this for twenty years. And I tell you, that is the best staff that they've ever had there, period. And since, I'm sixty years old, I hate to say that, but I've been there, and I've, I've seen it and seen people come and go there. And I tell you, it is so different with this staff here. They're nice, they're polite, and they got things in order. They really do. I've been over there, I know some of the workers. I've known for forty years. I grew up with some of them. And they don't have, he was telling me they don't have no health insurance for their workers there, the staff. And that just blew my mind. And I was asking, well, what happens if you guys break a leg, or you fall on the job, or something, you get laid off, or whatever, you know, with that leg, you're gonna have, you can't work? He said, I don't know. It goes back on the taxpayer, I guess. I don't know. Could we looked into that? Could I have you, Mayor, look into that and get back with us and let us know something on that? I'm just speaking for them because some of them didn't want their name mentioned. So if you could, you know, kind of look into that a little bit and let us know on that, I'm sure I'll be back here again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next, we have Kyle Berger, Mr. Berger.
I, I thank you for your time and thank you for the council. I just wanted to say, as a, as a citizen of the six-one-six-oh-five area code, sorry, I'm nervous a little bit. I just saw the deterioration because I grew up there almost my entire life, and I've seen the deterioration of the neighborhoods, the zip code. And I know that the crimes they're committed are also not only in minority or primarily minority neighborhoods, but also one of the poorest neighborhoods. And I don't know if anything's been discussed about what to do with that, to help with jobs and opportunity and economic growth, but I just wanted to give a few ideas. One of which is, I know the Harrison School will be torn down soon, but I don't know if anything's been talked about what to put there in its place. I was thinking about maybe putting a, her, somebody at least to put a grocery store in its place. That way, you can have, uh, job growth, uh, economic, economic opportunity and to in the food desert that has been rampant there since Kroger's closed. Another idea was to tear down some of the dilapidated and uninhabitable houses to maybe open up space for maybe better housing, green space, or if there's a big enough lot to also create small business buildings as well. And the third, um, the third idea that came to mind because I don't know what can be done with the, uh, the COVID relief money, but maybe partnering and see what happened in Stockton, California with a universal basic income program to guarantee a little bit of money to some of the people in these, uh, poor zip codes and poor neighborhoods to possibly create, uh, relief for, relief from stress, anxiety, depression, as well as to help pay the bills with, with the gas prices going high as well as the rampant inflation that's going on. Maybe this could help them make sure that they can both keep the lights on at night and to, uh, feed themselves and their kids. This has been showing to work in Stockton to help, uh, to help with bettering unemployment and to get better full-time jobs as well as increased wages and to help make sure that they don't have to worry about an emergency. And that's all I have to say. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. Next, we have Alan Max Axelrod.
My name's Alan Max Axelrod. I'm the campaign lead of a group called No Ameren Shutoffs, zero-dollar, all-volunteer campaign of fifty-three-member organizations spread across the state and adjacent states. Before I hand off the microphone to a member of the Starbucks Workers Union United, I wanted to tell you about the impact that you had last year when you, as an institution, advocated. Last year, on May eleventh, this City Council passed a resolution on utility shutoffs, calling it a pandemic safety risk and urging for our governor to act. That zero-dollar resolution brought in an additional thirty-five million dollars to help vulnerable residents. It went to over forty-one thousand in-need households. So when listening to the Starbucks Workers United, please keep that in mind that you have the ability to create real impactful change not only for your immediate residents, but the entire state. Thank you.
Hi, um, I'm gonna take my mask for this.
I'm gonna take off my mask for this. My name's John. This is my coworker Violet. She's gonna be passing out some copies of this rep... Oh, already did, perfect, on it. Well, we've got a resolution that we'd like to request be voted on at next week's city council meeting. It's on behalf of the West Central Illinois Labor Council and Campus Town Starbucks Workers. Violet and I have both been organizers with Starbucks Workers United. Violet's currently an employee of the Campus Town location. I was up until just under two weeks ago when I got new employment. But Violet's going to read the resolution.
Whereas it is our belief that all families should have the means to thrive in safe and healthy communities, and whereas people across the country and in our cities still struggle for a high quality of life for their families and other basic freedoms, freedom from racial discrimination, freedom from degrading work conditions, and the freedom to come together in strong unions to improve their place of work. And whereas the ability to come together in strong unions gives working people, particularly women and people of color, a powerful voice to speak up for themselves, their families, their communities, and ensures that they are treated with dignity and respect at work. And whereas when people have strong unions, they gain the power and numbers to reduce racial and gender disparities and ensure that they have good jobs for themselves, their families, and all our communities. And whereas people working collectively in strong unions have won victories like the forty-hour work week, overtime pay, health and safety standards, paid family leave, earned sick and safe time. And whereas when people can negotiate together for better wages and benefits and dignified working conditions, our communities are stronger and our entire economy is made more fair. And whereas the Union Members twenty-twenty report released by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics on January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, found that in twenty-twenty, non-union workers had median weekly earnings that were eighty-four percent of earnings for workers who were union members. And whereas on December sixth, twenty-twenty-one, Bloomberg reported that the U.S. corporations are amassing record profits, explaining that third-quarter after-tax corporate profits from current production amounted to eleven percent of gross domestic product. More profits than in three months ended in September than ever before. Not just in dollar terms, something that happens frequently, but as a share of the economy. And whereas on October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, Starbucks issued a press release stating, "Record Q4 and full-year fiscal twenty-twenty-one results and consolidated net revenues of twenty-nine point one billion increased twenty-four percent, twenty-one percent on a fifty-two-week basis from the prior year." And whereas on September second, twenty-twenty-one, Gallup reported sixty-eight percent of adults in the U.S. support labor unions, the highest approval rate since nineteen sixty-five, and seventy-seven percent of young adults, eighteen-to-thirty-four-year-olds, support unions. And whereas on October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one, CNBC reported that the National Labor Relations Board ruled in favor of Starbucks Workers United when Starbucks attempted to prohibit individual stores from holding unionization votes. And whereas the city of Peoria, as an employer, has longstanding policies of card-check neutrality, recognizing a union when the majority of a workforce finds, signs union cards, and committing to allow city of Peoria employees to discuss unionization, free from threats, intimidation, anti-union propaganda, anti-union meetings, and lawsuits. And whereas Starbucks workers are demanding a voice in their workplace and a seat at the table to negotiate wages, benefits, and working conditions, health and safety protections, adequate staffing, seniority pay, and a living wage. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Peoria, that the city of Peoria council, noting that the city of Peoria practices union-friendly policies and employment matters, urges Starbucks to do the same and agree to non-interference and fair election principles, to enable workers to choose whether or not to unionize without fear of reprisal. If Starbucks workers in Peoria unionize, the Peoria City Council urges Starbucks to bargain for a fair contract. The Peoria City Council believes that this unionization drive will benefit not only Starbucks workers, but all workers in Peoria. Be it further resolved that the Peoria City Council supports all workers in Peoria who organize into unions to collectively fight for better wages, benefits, and working conditions.
Thank you. And last, we have Rachel O'Reilly, Ms. O'Reilly.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Rachel O'Reilly. What I'm saying is my own opinions and views, it may or may not reflect the Alexis Camery Scott campaign. What I'd like to do is go over and just refresh what exactly sex trafficking is. The terminology that I'm going to be using is from SharedHopeInternational.com. It's from the victims that have left, quote-unquote, "the life." So if you have children and you don't want them to hear about sex trafficking terminology, now would be a good time to maybe cover their ears. Alexis Camery Scott is a victim of, also, not only that website, but in two thousand eighteen, spring of two thousand eighteen, Star, Star Hope Church teamed up with the Center for Prevention of Abuse and brought a woman from Chicago that deals, that teaches, that is with the victims of human and sex trafficking in the library. So that's also where I'm getting my information from. Sorry, I'm nervous. The, the facts of the case, she was found beaten, undressed, beaten, none of her things in Las Vegas. We know that a music producer from Chicago who was affiliates with the prime suspects on Richmond Street, where she was last seen, paid for her ticket there. And another thing about sex trafficking is a lot of people, sex prostitution, sex trafficking is always under the guise of voluntary prostitution, and that is why it's so hard to bring about justice. The victims, the pimps use coercion and manipulation. So people that think that prostitution should be legal, that's gonna do the exact opposite things. It's gonna do the exact opposite. Pimps use manipulation and coercion. There are three types of pimp: a Romeo pimp, a gorilla pimp, and a CEO pimp. A Romeo pimp will spend about two to three years courting a, a woman with intentions to, to sex traffic her, to make her a prostitute. Then after two or three years, some situation comes up, he says, you know, I need money, can you dance? So a lot of prostitutes, sex traffic victims are dancers. Then after that, they try and get them to do more than dance, they try and get them to prostitute. So when that doesn't happen, they do something called seasoning, where they will beat you, they will threaten your family and everyone you know, so that you won't tell on them and you'll be compliant. The facts of the case, Alexis, most likely, from the facts that we do know, she was never seen coming out of that house. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous, I should have wrote this down. There's also, it's like the attitude that people think because prostitution is voluntary, that police shouldn't be going after... And I'm for the Nordic model. The Nordic model is where the, the victim, because she's, human traffickers use drugs as tools, they get these women hooked on drugs. But traffickers don't, gangs organize crime, they don't just use drugs, because once the drug is used up, it's used up. Where if you can get a woman addicted to drugs and get her to use her body, so you can make money off of her body and use physical violence, because a Romeo pimp can turn into a gorilla pimp. A gorilla pimp will use violence. What happened in Las Vegas was either the client, somebody that the music producer knew, because he went on one of the shows, I can't remember which one, I think it was Steve Wilkos, and said, oh, you know, I know some people, they're, it wasn't me, it wasn't me, but they're some real tough goons. So also, he said that Alexis, for a bachelor party for a dance, maybe he never paid Alexis. Maybe he, maybe they lured her into that house, thinking she was gonna get the money, or maybe they made her. Maybe she didn't have a choice, maybe she had to go because she had been beaten before, and maybe they were making her come to that house. Please keep Alexis Camery Scott in your thoughts and prayers. Please do everything you can. Please share her flyers. Please have the conversation. Please see how you can enforce ordinances. Prostitution is a public nuisance. Women shouldn't, victims shouldn't be criminalized, but the Johns should, should have full, 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 full felonies, because they're not, they're not manipulated, they're not coerced. They don't end up dead. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of our public comment. Madam Clerk?
We have an executive session.
Counsel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We need an executive session pursuant to five ILCS one-twenty, two C one, to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee, as well as two C twenty-one, closed session minutes.
Okay. I need a motion to go into closed. Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Ruck Regal?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Now I need a motion to, to adjourn. Moved by Councilmember Grab, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Ruck Regal? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your service.